How are you doing?
I'm doing great.
You can do better than that.
Oh, no.
No, I was watching her.
Yeah, it's just a job.
It's always fun to do this in the city.
It's just a job to her. Shadow.
Nine fifty.
Someone else.
They won't be able to pay one.
Hey, you know that. I would never want to let you go, come on. Yeah. Pop off at the rest of the day. Just find things to win everywhere. He's like, he's like, he's like. I know that. It was not continued for.
I think she said that.
I guess today he was in the heat of it. But he definitely comes to eye and the thing is, I already did that for one year. She knows you do. Monday for our three years. That little back corner gets real crazy. I don't remember your name. You're gonna move around now, right? Not yet.
We're waiting.
Three years. Three years of school. He needs to find a shaking back tonight. And then, um, he's gone Friday. And hopefully, if this is a welcome after.
Yeah.
I'm kind of a little.
Yeah.
I didn't roll. Um, I have, he, there's a kind of a, the air. I was trying to think about what he's doing. Like, um, hopefully, we're welcome. Hard to, hard to keep track of it.
Pretty cool.
Good guy.
How are you?
Good, so how are you doing? So how's things up on the hill?
Uh, good.
Good, so how's the master garden doing? Good?
Uh, we're all doing pretty well.
Yeah, always.
I want to thank you.
Okay. Matt wheels. Uh huh.
And, uh, this last week, uh, two of the finest. Then I'm going to thank the sheriff.
Yeah, there's, there's a. We don't have an egg.
Can you see what's written on their forehead? The water.
It's very thick.
War.
Yeah. You're about right, too.
Yes, I know.
Gee, all three of you in one row. Holy crap, girl.
This shot's gonna get us all. It's.
I mean, on, well, actually, after that. My.
Big time.
Yes. Yeah. Actually, no, he's sorry. But it was. So. Yeah. Well, I'll read.
He was. Where'd you start off?
There's a lot of this. It's.
I come that way in the morning. Sometimes.
You know, there's. I just kind of move on right the other side. We're first, first. And when you're down there, and they wind down. They pass over the side. I'm almost down that. It's more than that. How much like the big, you know, like trees, you know?
Yeah, it's like, yeah.
It's like, I guess. That's.
Yeah.
I prefer what I prefer.
And now I'm going to.
Go down. Of course, I've got more than that.
On the.
Well, I think.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I'm not.
Our book, when there's, when there's a different theme on like either, uh, thought or anything. We should go with graphic part. And all of them. A dollar.
There you are. How much is John doing there? I love him.
Oh, I. I went back and.
Yeah.
Yes. We could.
Well, you know, yes. Yeah. Dressing's got seven.
We're starting.
Oh, excuse me.
We'll wait when you're, we'll wait.
Will, Will Ari's waiting for you, Johnny.
Thank you. Good morning. Uh, welcome. At this time, we will open up the, um, Cove Orchard Sewer Service District Board of Directors' meeting for June twenty second, twenty seventeen. And, um, at this point, we'll consider the approval of the minutes from August fourth, twenty sixteen. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Um, Madam Chair, I'd like to just get a clarification, just to make sure, since this is an official action, that the, at least if the one I have is wrong, it shows the agenda for today at nine A, this taking place at nine AM.
That was my ear.
Okay, I, I think we should just correct the agenda to just say it's nine forty or whatever.
Okay.
But other than that, I will make a recommendation that we approve the minutes from the August fourth, two thousand sixteen minute meeting.
All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes. Item one, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Our second item is a public hearing regarding adoption of the twenty seventeen eighteen budget. And at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. And, uh, do we have any?
Didn't you do the public hearing last time?
I thought, didn't we do the hearing? This is just the adoption.
You're just doing the adoption. Yes.
So, um, we don't need the public hearing. So we'll move on to item three, which is consideration of the approval of resolution sixteen dash seventeen dash six dash twenty-two dash one, which is the adoption of the budget for fiscal year twenty seventeen eighteen in the amount of one hundred and one thousand four hundred fifty-eight dollars and setting appropriations in the amount of seventy-eight thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars.
I so, I so moved that we approve the resolutions, Red.
All right. We have a motion to approve of resolution seventeen dash six dash twenty-two dash one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Any other business? We have no other business, so at this time, we will close the Cove Orchard Sewer Service District Board of Directors' meeting for June twenty-second at twenty seventeen, and the time is nine forty-three. Thank you all. Now, this one says nine thirty.
Nine fifty.
So.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I figured this is. I was asking. Well, it's.
How you doing?
Good. That's right.
Chris, do you have a team here?
No. Because you're.
You're right. All right. So we're going to reopen the Cove Orchard Sewer Service District Board of Directors' meeting, um, for, um, June twenty-second at nine forty-eight. We had a correction to the figures. So, uh, we've already done the consideration approval of the minutes, but we'll move on to item three, which is consideration approval of resolution seventeen dash six dash twenty-two dash one, which was, which is to adopt the budget for fiscal year twenty seventeen eighteen in the amount of one hundred and one thousand four hundred fifty-eight dollars and setting appropriations for, uh, personnel, materials, and services, and capital, in the amount of seventy-eight thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars. We also need to, um, add to that twenty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which is, uh, we have to add that contingency amount. So the total amount is one hundred and one thousand four hundred fifty-eight dollars. So we're just adding that twenty-two thousand nine seventy-seven. So, um, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd recommend that we, um, strike the original resolution seventeen dash six dash twenty-two dash one by, as previously approved, or we approve, uh, the new resolution seventeen dash six dash twenty-two dash one.
So I have a motion to approve. I agree as a man, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Passes. All right, with that, uh, we have no other business, so we will, um, close the Cove Orchard Sewer Service District Board of Directors' meeting for June twenty-second, and it is nine forty-nine. Thank you all for that.
Can I have that top sheet for my reference? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, at this time, we will open up the Yamhill Extension Service District Board of Directors' meeting for June twenty-second.
Nine fifty AM. And we will, uh, entertain a motion for item number one, which is consideration of approval of the minutes from August fourth, twenty fifteen.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to approve item one, consideration of the minutes. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. I, on to item three, the consideration of approval of resolution seventeen dash six dash twenty-two dash one, which was, is to adopt the budget for fiscal year twenty seventeen eighteen in the amount of four hundred fifty thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars, setting appropriations in the amount of three hundred eighty-one thousand two hundred eighty-three dollars, and levying taxes in the amount of point four four nine per thousand assessed.
Point zero four four.
Point zero four four nine per thousand assessed value. So do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to approve item three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Uh, we have no other business, so at this time, we will close the Yamhill County Extension Service District Board of Directors' meeting at nine fifty-one. Thank you all. Do that. It's yours. Shut down.
No, it's easy, Dennis.
They're well deserved, you know.
Detail, detail.
So, Mr. Eric, could I make the back forty?
Yes.
So, we are here today as doctors and护士. These are associate dean of extension at Oregon State University. And I believe you guys received the email about our regional administrator, Derek. Glenn has, uh, moved to, back to a programming position, uh, with watershed, some water quality. So in the interim time, until that, uh, position is filled, um, Lindsay is, uh, taking, uh, stepping in as our intern for the next few months.
Welcome.
Welcome, Lindsay.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
My contact will continue to be Mike and Kelly. Um, they provide phenomenal leadership at my county. So thank you, Mike. And we're in the process of opening an external search for a new regional administrator because we have, um, excellent candidates who have expressed interest. And so we want to make sure to get started on that process and open the door quickly to repo for Hulk Yamhill, Marion Lynn, and Ben County as a region.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Looking forward to seeing more of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wait that time yet, is it? You're so quick, Mary.
Where did that friend go that's normally here? What's his, what's his name? You know, though, absolutely fabulous. What's his name? Mr. Barry, where's Mr. Barry? Oh, okay.
He's like two months off.
I wonder if he was all right?
He has, he has this, uh, large tour they have coming up.
Oh, yeah.
And he, he usually comes out First Baptist.
Yeah.
On Monday to Friday, and he took like two months off. I don't know if. He's back last Friday or last Wednesday.
I really appreciate his positive attitude.
Yeah.
So he's, he's kind of fun.
He wrapped up his tour, you know, Monday, still had two plans, so then he's probably towards there.
Oh, okay.
Uh, it's ready to work it on.
Okay, well, I just wondered if he was okay.
The bishop, okay, it's kind of.
Absolutely fabulous, or?
Beyond wonderful.
Beyond wonderful.
And he's beyond buried.
Oh, being.
It is now ten o'clock, and we will open the, uh, June twenty-second, twenty seventeen formal session of the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners. And, uh, at this time, I'd like Becky, if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Ster. At this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Sterrett to introduce our pastor.
All right, thank you Commissioner. Very happy to have joining us again is Pastor Ronnie Cooksey, originally from Texas. Pastor Ronnie came to Valley Baptist in McMinnville in two thousand and six. Before that, the Cookseys, he and his wife Kathy and family, served as missionaries in Japan for ten years, served in churches in Texas for seven years, has degrees from Dallas Baptist University, Southwestern Baptist Theological Seminary, and Golden Gate Baptist Theological Seminary. They have eight amazing kids and it's always fun to watch what they're up to. So Pastor, thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you. Brother in heaven, we thank you for a beautiful day here in Yamhill County. Thank you for this meeting and for these commissioners and their staff in our county. Father, you said in your word that you appoint our government leaders as ministers of good. I pray for our commissioners as they meet again today and as they work and discuss throughout the week, that you would build them with your wisdom, with your understanding, direction. I pray that they'll be able to know what is right and do it, and that you protect them when they make hard choices to do what is right. Pray for our county and its citizens. Pray for marriage, that you would protect and that you would bless the marriages in our county, strengthen them against so many assaults and attacks. Pray for our children, pray they would protect them and they would have health, they would have wisdom and understanding, you protect them from the ways that the enemy would want to ruin their lives and leave them stray into paths that would harm them now and for a long time, and pray that you would protect them, give them insight and wisdom. Lord, pray for our churches and businesses and volunteer organizations, that you would bless and use them, that you would do good things today for your kingdom's sake and just as a blessing to our county. Thank you for Christ's death and cross for my sin, our sin. I pray that this county would glorify you today. Jesus, amen. Amen.
Thank you Pastor.
Thank you.
Just want to ask also if we could remember Crystal Cox's husband is deployed in Afghanistan. So we remember their family and, and her husband and all the folks in our county who are deployed and their families. So thank you for your service. Thank you. Thanks Pastor, appreciate it.
Okay. At this time, we have a time period set aside for public comment, for anything that any of the citizens want to bring forward that is not a quasi judicial matter. And at this point in time, I have one intent to speak card. So Mr. David Wall, if you would come forward please and state your name and address for the record. Good morning, Your Honor. My name is David S. Wall. My address is Post Office Box seven five six, New Burton, Oregon, nine seven one three two. I have several issues today to discuss. Primarily, I want to get a ruling from the bench if I can discuss docket number E dash oh six sixteen without any further encumbrances from the office of the attorney.
So this is a time for public comment? We've talked about this matter before. I don't, if this is the same matter, this is the Wolves and People appeal that has been dismissed by Lupa, is that correct? I don't have the numbers.
That is correct. First, it was never pending before the Lupa public.
Is that, that's, that's the matter on which you'd like to make some public comment?
One particular issue.
Okay, there won't be any rulings from the commissioners. This is a time for you to make public comment if that's the topic you'd like to speak on.
It will be entered into the record, your comment. The reason why is that I was precluded several times before even though there was at no time any case pending at Lupa. The error occurred with county councils not making a simple phone call to Lupa to ensure that there was a case pending. Now, it is understandable that they were served by the attorney for the petitioner, but they left it at that. And I was apparently the only one in the entire room, including all of you, that knew that there was at no time any case pending at Lupa. And so therefore, my initial discussions were stifled. My First Amendment rights were trampled on into the dirt by either, we either have an issue of either negligence or the granddaddy of all torts, negligence per se. But having said all that, and now I can speak on it, I will just say over the next few months, I will be bringing evidence to this robust body on this matter. Moving on to other matters, I would like this commissioner, or the commissioners, to take the necessary and complete steps to give my unbridled thanks to the McMinnville Police Department, specifically the chief of the McMinnville Police, and to the Sheriff's Department for their efforts in suppressing the criminal element at the farmer's market that will be occurring later today. Last week, both the sheriff's deputy and two McMinnville police officers did a cursory walk by. There is a problem with the criminal element at First Baptist Church and the First Presbyterian Church, that at this time, there's been no criminal activity perpetrated upon young mothers and their children and/or senior citizens or anybody else that I know of. But this, these folks are at harm by this element. Next, I would like you to reconsider all sorts of activities allowing non agricultural uses on all farm use lands within Yamhill County. This helicopter business has been given quite a lot of press lately. I too have seen helicopters fly at a certain altitude that does not nuisance yet in my neighborhood, but yet I have seen them over these wineries. Now, these wineries have, shall we say, evolved into quasi tourist events with representative like restaurants and other activities that are not commensurate with the obligations set forth by these exclusive farm use zoning. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Having no further intent to speak cards at this time, we will move on to our agenda item B, which is the consent agenda. And prior to asking for a motion, we do have three items on the consent agenda that county council has asked to speak to prior to moving forward with them. That's item four on your agenda, item ten on your agenda, and item twelve. And with that, Commissioner, or Council, if you would please state your.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would just like to ask that the board approve items four and ten, subject to the final review and approval of county council's office. We're continuing to work with the vendors on both of those contracts with some final modifications to the contract. But this would take care of the approval by the board, and then I will bring back any material revisions to the county administrator and to the board if necessary. And then item twelve, I'd just like to clarify and add a little bit of additional detail to that item. It's actually the authorization of the execution and delivery of an amendment to the indenture and certain other documents and certificates as described in the board order that is in your packet with respect to the county's revenue refunding bonds, series two thousand twelve A for George Fox University, tax exempt, and revenue refunding bonds, series two thousand twelve B for George Fox University, which are federally taxable bonds. So I just wanted to clarify that that's the, that's the action that you'll be taking with regard to those bonds. And that's it.
Okay, so with that then, we can take these actions. If there is any material change to these, then they would be, you would bring that back to us?
Correct.
And we would then reverse this action. Okay, with those changes, do I hear a motion?
I'll just make a motion that we approve our consent agenda with the comments included by the legal counsel.
Okay, it has been moved that we accept the consent agenda as presented with the council reviewing items four, ten, and twelve, and to come back to us if there are any changes.
Just with respect to, to respect to four and ten, twelve, there aren't going to be any changes to. I'm simply clarifying the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for that clarification. So on items four and ten, then if there were any material changes to the documents, they would be brought back to us. With those clarifications, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, very good. Consent agenda passes. And moving on then to old business, item C. This is in the matter of accepting the appeal and overturning the planning director's approval of docket SDR dash oh one dash seventeen, denial of a permit to allow processing of marijuana on property located at one five five zero zero zero, two zeros.
Correct.
Southwest Dusty Drive, tax lot five five one zero dash one two zero zero, applicant Richard E. Wagner. So council?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we would ask that this item be set over for one additional week to come back before the board and next Thursday's formal session.
Council requests to set us, set this over for one more week. Any opposition then?
I have no opposition.
Okay, so item C one will be set over for one more week to be the final findings and will be presented to the board a week from today?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Moving on then to item D, other business, consideration of the approval of Yamhill County Economic Development Vision, Mission, Values, and Strategies. And for point of clarification for the audience, this is something we've had a couple of work sessions on. We've been reviewing, looking at how we want to move forward with the development of our economic development strategies with the county. And a document has been provided that is kind of a capsulization of the GROW report that the county commissioned five years ago. And with that, do I hear a motion to accept the, the mission statement as it's presented by our administrator?
So moved.
Okay, so moved. Any discussion?
I would just, the only discussion I have is I'd like to thank our county administrator and the lay members of the budget committee and my fellow commissioners for taking and extracting all this information out of the GROW report to come out with a final, short, very precise document that'll guide our way and that we're adopting that'll guide our way in economic development in the future. I think this has been needed. The GROW plan is wonderful, but I think this really boils it down to what we want to do. So I want to thank Laura and staff and then the members of our late committee to help us put all this together, so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
And so as just stated, this is a document that will be our guiding principle. This is going to be working material, material that will keep us focused and heading in a defined direction as we develop our economic development process. So I thank everybody for their hard work on this. And with that, I would ask for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right. And then we have also today on our agenda, and let me dig down here and locate it, right here. We have before us today a resolution. This is a, being brought forward, a matter of a resolution in support of the stepping up initiative. And I'm going to read the, read this into the record. Whereas counties routinely provide treatment services to the estimated two million people with serious mental illness booked into jail each year, prevalence rates of serious mental illness in jails are three to six times higher than for the general population. And whereas almost three quarters of adults with serious mental illness in jails have co-occurring substance use disorders and adults with mental illness tend to stay longer in jail and upon release are at a higher risk of recidivism than people without these disorders. And whereas county jails spend two to three times more on adults with mental illness that require interventions compared to those without these treatment needs. And whereas without the appropriate treatment and service, people with mental illnesses continue to cycle through the criminal justice system, often resulting in tragic outcomes for these individuals and their families. And whereas Yamhill County and all counties take pride in their responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of its residents in efficient and cost effective ways. And whereas Yamhill County has been working on systems, system improvements to keep individuals with mental health challenges out of jail and the justice system since two thousand and nine by implementing a special needs task force and an evidence-based decision-making initiative, and developed its community outreach specialist team partnering with all local law enforcement and the Health and Human Services Department, adopted the sequential intercept, intercept model for diversion of individuals from justice system, and established evidence-based risk screening tools to understand our data and achieve the goals of reduction of initial involvement, overall length of stay, and rates of return to incarceration. And whereas through stepping up, the National Association of Counties, the Council of State Government Justice Center, and the American Psychiatric Association Foundation are encouraging public, private, and nonprofit partners to reduce the number of people with mental illness in jails, now therefore let it be resolved that the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners has hereby signed the call to action to reduce the number of people with mental illness in our county, commit, in our county, commit to sharing lessons learned with other counties in the state and across the country to support a national initiative and encourage county officials, employees, and citizens to participate in stepping up officials, employees, and citizens to participate in stepping up initiative, done this fifteenth day of June, twenty seventeen.
I would move approval of the resolution.
It's been moved that we approve this resolution as read. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. Thank you very much. And with, let's see, we have receipt of public comment? Adopting the budget.
No, you're not adopting it today. You're just receiving public comment in a public hearing. Adoption will be next week.
Okay. And is there anybody who would like to speak?
First, you need to open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. We will now open the hearing on the county's budget. Do I have any?
If I could just say a few words, Commissioner?
Yes, you can.
Just to review that the, the Board of Commissioners and the Budget Committee met on May third, two thousand seventeen, to approve a preliminary budget of one hundred and thirty-six million, eight hundred and sixty-four dollar, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars. And then during this last month, you have had a last call for budget changes, and that has resulted in a final budget of one hundred and forty million, seven hundred and one thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And that is approximately one percent more than the current fiscal year budget. So not much of a change when you look overall from this current fiscal year to next fiscal year. And so now is your opportunity to take any public comment on next year's budget. And then next week, you will then adopt the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Okay. Now, is there anyone here who would like to speak to the county's budget, tentative budget? Yes, ma'am? If you could come forward and state your name and address for the record?
My name is Stephanie Tean. Here as an citizen. My address is one-two-one-six North Tyler Court, Lafayette.
Thank you.
And I've had a chance to look at this budget just briefly. It's a very long budget, as you know. I have a couple of questions, and I'm hoping you can call me to clarify, because it looks like a pretty significant disparity on the paper, and I'm hoping that you guys can call me to clarify some of this. For example, our, our county legal counsel this year has received a seven percent salary increase, and the senior assistant county council has received five percent, and the county administrator has received over three and a half percent. These are percentages that are not equal to, any weren't equal to people who are working frontline staff, and the salaries already to begin with are equal about three masters' level employees in Health and Human Services. So you can see where my question comes in.
So the county administrator will receive the same cost of living increase as the YCA bargaining unit? So that no additional compensation increase for the county administrator. County council's office, the senior assistant county council, and chief county council will receive a step increase and the same cost of living increase that the YCA bargaining unit will receive, as does the rest of, you know, depending on negotiations, of course, and if the Board of Commissioners extends a me-too to county council and the county administrator.
So you receiving three and a half percent will also be given to?
No, I would, I will not be receiving a three and a half percent increase. I will, if the, if the.
So last year's salary was one-thirty-eight, one-fifty-five. This year's approved is one-fourty-three, oh-thirty-two, which is a four thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollar difference, which is three and a half percent.
I will not receive that. I will receive whatever the board extends to me, which is typically the same cost of living increase that the YCA unit receives. But that wouldn't be determined until after negotiations have been concluded. And if the board decides to extend that same COLA to the county administrator.
So this is just proposed and not?
It's.
Well, just like we do throughout the budget, a lot of the budgeted salaries that are in there, we want to ensure that we have sufficient budget authority for any changes or any COLAs or anything, and especially going into a contract year like we currently are under negotiations, we want to make sure that there's sufficient, you know, to absorb that cost, because a contract has not been settled at this point with our largest bargaining unit, and we're in the process of adopting this budget.
So I think, Ken, is it safe to say then, based on her question, that that, she talks about that increase, that amount, is there as, I'll call it a, I hate to call it a worst-case scenario, but it's, more but the normal would be like the county administrator getting whatever the COLA is that the, the other employees?
That's the typical, what the board has done.
So the percentage and the amount doesn't really reflect what the actual increase?
Correct.
Right.
And is that the same for the county council and assistant?
Correct.
Correct. You know, you budget those amounts, and then you're also taking into consideration any step increases and potential COLA increases that could occur during the budget year.
And I don't know if this is part of the budget, maybe you can answer that at this point, but does this include the person who's hired for bargaining? Is that the senior or the assistant county council?
Which person are you referring to?
That's a contract. We have a contract with that person.
So a third attorney?
No, it's a, well, it's a contractor that we've hired to represent us in negotiations. It's not represented in that particular budget that you're looking at. It's outside legal services, which is in the ten-thirty-nine budget, which is non-departmental.
I think labor negotiations is such a fine art that organizations are much better off contracting with somebody that specializes in labor negotiations, because I hate to say they've seen it all, been there, done that, but, so that's why not just the county, the city does it. A lot of people do it. They, they will hire an outside legal consultant or outside consultant to do most of the labor negotiations.
Well, and we, I can clarify, too. We, we brought in outside labor law assistance to four unions. We have handled internally negotiations with two of the smaller units, the FAPO and the Deputy DA unit. So we renew contract with outside counsel for the, the two larger units, the YCEA and the Teamsters Group and the Sheriff's Office.
And some of those expenses are represented in county council's budgets.
Some in my budget and some in the ten-thirty-nine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that you looked at it enough to have questions and cared enough to come down.
Yep.
And I wish more people did that. So thank you very much. Anytime, come down and ask questions. Thank you.
We do appreciate the citizens taking active participation in what we do, because they're, they're who we answer to, so thank you. All right. That being said, then, we will be bringing back the budget next week for adoption.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just, I just need to ask one more time if anybody else here has any other comment, and close the hearing.
Okay. If anybody else has any further comment, otherwise I will now close the public hearing. And thank you very much. All right. Any announcements?
I don't have any, I don't have any, but I think, except yesterday afternoon, I did have the opportunity, or yesterday morning and afternoon, to meet with both the Director of ODOT's Transit Division, and their Transit Manager, and also Region Two's Transit Manager, and Yamhill County's, YCTA's representative with the Transit Division, to help me understand more about how transit in the state of Oregon under ODOT works, and it was a very good meeting.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sterrett?
I have an awful lot, just maybe briefly. As many of you know, I've been working on an initiative to have a county entity that supports foster parents, and met with Director Clyde Psyke and a number of other DHS higher-ups on Monday, along with Silas, our HHS director. And they are well aware of the fact that in this county, we're speaking up for foster parents, and we are working on, we've had a number of, we've got one coming up on Saturday and one last Friday, to bring foster parents together in a sort of a safe place where they can talk about their issues with child welfare. And we're going to, we're going to become, hopefully, an entity that the rest of the state can pattern themselves after in terms of speaking up for a group that has absolutely no advocacy at the state level. So more to come on that.
Good job. Good job, Commissioner.
Okay. There are a number of things going on throughout the county in every area that we deal with. Serving on several boards myself, I understand how involved the state is in a number of these activities, and it's important that the community know how involved our commissioners are in making certain that the state's focus comes to Yamhill County, and that we don't get left out of the conversation. It's been often said, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And we definitely want to be at the table in these discussions. And so rest assured that the commissioners in Yamhill County are very active at the state level to make certain that our needs are being met, or at least that we are a part of the conversation as these programs, such as, I know how hard Commissioner Sterrett's been working on this issue. She has fostered, she's been a foster parent to a young lady who graduated from high school this year, if I.
Foster mentor, yes, she graduated.
Foster mentor, so. I, I really think that Yamhill County is well-served by their commissioners. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
For that. With that, if I have nothing further, we will adjourn this meeting of the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners. Thank you very much for your attendance.
Thank you, Dave.